Go ahead and call the meeting to order if you would, please stand. I'd like to recognize Reverend Russell Neva to give us our invocation. I guess I'm doing it. Okay, if you would, please pray. Father, thank you for this name. Father, we thank you for the privilege of voting. And Father, we pray for our country that you will be with us as we move into a new chapter. And Father, that you would give us the wisdom that we need. Father, we just pray that during this meeting that you would watch over us, keep us safe, and give us the wisdom and the eyes that you have. Father, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. At this time, troop one, 1908, will present our flags.
Audience attention. Call guard, former march. Call guard, prepare to post colors. Now, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance.
On the face of the flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God and one indivisible.
Call guard. Uh. Call guard, return the first. Post.
I'd like to recognize our scouts. If you would, just raise your hand when I say your name. Esteban Lopez, Jacob Prieto, Isaac Prieto, and of course, your scoutmaster, Steve Lopez. Thank you very much. If you would, please be seated. This time, we'll recognize Dolores Watts. If you would, please come to the podium.
I'm going to have Guy Watts to come with me as well. Mayor David Turner and councilmen and women and guests. My name is Dolores Watts, and I'm from the Salvation Army. And we are starting the Salvation Army Angel Tree Program, which provides Christmas gifts for disadvantaged children, from infants to thirteen, and for senior citizens who are sixty-five and older. The Angel Tree Program started this week and ends December nineteenth. I brought some angel tags with me, and I'm so proud to say that the city of Odessa adopted a hundred angels. If you look at the angel tag, you'll see it has name, age, gender, clothing size, and one Christmas wish. Community individuals select an angel, and then they purchase items for that child or for that senior based on the information that is on the angel tag, and then they return the gifts to the Salvation Army. Our Christmas food and toy distribution will be on Monday, December nineteenth, from nine a.m. until three p.m. at the Salvation Army. We also have the Empty Stocking Fund. It's a fundraiser event that's sponsored and created by the Odessa American Newspaper. It started in nineteen ninety-five and last year raised eighty-five thousand. Our goal this year is a hundred and twenty thousand. And our bell ringing season, it starts the day after Thanksgiving, and it runs through Christmas Eve. You can help a lot of people just by being a bell ringer. Every day, people come to the Salvation Army asking for food from our food pantry, or wanting shelter, or needing a shower, or a hot meal. So by ringing the bell at a Salvation Army Red Kettle, you can help raise the funds to provide these necessary services at Christmas and throughout the year. And all donations that we raise at the Red Kettle stay right here in Ector County. We also have our annual Thanksgiving dinner that's on Thanksgiving Day from eleven until one o'clock, and also our Christmas dinner on Christmas Day.
Our Red Kettle Campaign is our biggest fundraiser of the year. We will raise fifty percent or more of all the funds that we need for the entire year. Now, each Salvation Army location has to raise their own resources to provide for the programs and the services that it offers. The Salvation Army, because a lot of times I have people ask me, well, does the Salvation Army receive federal funds? The Salvation Army of Odessa does not receive one penny in federal funds. The Salvation Army uses the funds that we receive to provide shelter for children, women, men, and families, and to serve prepared meals, provide rental assistance, utilities, and character-building programs for at-risk youth. Last year, the Salvation Army provided over six thousand nights of shelter. More than twenty-two thousand five hundred meals were served to the hungry and homeless of Odessa and Ector County. And eighty-nine percent out of every dollar goes directly to provide services and the programs for the community that are needed. This Red Kettle season, we invite you to participate in helping us provide for the needy and the less fortunate of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Okay, next, we will move.
Well, before you sit down, could we please have some of those stocking carts? I would like to have.
Oh, those were the ones the city got.
I know, but where down the city?
We can make some available in the city. We actually got a hundred and fifty this year, and it's the employees, and every year the employees really come through.
That's fantastic.
Yes, they do. Thank you for that.
Okay. Next, we'll move consent agenda. Do we have any motions for the consent agenda?
Yes. I would like to remove D, E, and F.
Okay. We have a motion to remove D, E, and F. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of removing D, E, and F, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we will need to approve the remaining consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Seven.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda? Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item D, consider adopting the Revised Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan. Mr. Kerr.
Tom, I don't have any problem with this. It's just with the second reading, if there's anyone out there that would like to talk about it, I want them to have that opportunity.
I want them to need to fill out a card first.
Certainly. Thank you. We have, this is the second reading of an ordinance for the adoption of a revised water conservation drought contingency ordinance. The reason we're bringing the ordinance forward, or the plan, the Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan revised, is, number one, regulatory reasons. Every five years, they require for us to update and adopt the plan that we find fit. In the water, in the revisions to the plan, we are not affecting the drought contingency portion of the plan. It is changing just as, it is staying just as it is and not changing. The water conservation portion of the plan, we are updating to current figures and goals and objectives. The standards that are in the plan were adopted in two thousand nine, or set in two thousand nine and adopted again in two thousand and eleven, and those numbers are now well up and out of date. We had a goal of about a hundred and seventy-nine gallons per cap a day at the time. Now, we're using closer to one thirty-six, so we're going to revise that standard now.
Okay. Are there any questions, Mr. Kerr? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Seven.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Next, considering amending section one dash thirteen dash eighty-three of the City Code of Ordinances, Mr. Patton.
Good evening. This is the second and final reading of our proposed rental rates for our community buildings as well as the Pal Gym at Floyd Quinn. Now, we have got our current rates for Selena Sherwood Slater and Wissin Community Buildings at eighty-five dollars per rental with a seventy-five dollar deposit. We also have, our proposed rate is one hundred and twenty dollars with a two-hundred-dollar deposit. We've got on the books around January the first, we're going to open up Longdale Community Building, an incredible facility that we renovated, and we'll have a top-of-the-line facility there. And our community building proposed rental rate there is going to be four hundred and seventy dollars with a one hundred and fifty dollar deposit. Now, at Floyd Quinn, the rental rate currently is one hundred dollars with a one hundred and fifty dollar deposit, and our rental rate proposed is three hundred and seventy dollars with a one hundred and fifty dollar deposit. I need to add that at Longdale and at our Floyd Quinn Gym, those two facilities are large, and we found that people really don't clean them like they need to after the rental rate. So those two facilities, we're going to contract clean after every rental rate. The proposed rates that we have are those rates that cover our operational costs, and for those two facilities, it covers the cleaning costs also. Our Longdale Community Building is over five thousand square feet, and it's a very beautiful facility that will be opening up soon. And with that, I think it's appropriate that if somebody has a party there, they're not going to stay later and clean up the facility like it needs to be, and we want to keep it in top shape. Now, our other four community buildings, Selena Sherwood and Slater, the renters will remain and the option to have the facility cleaned up themselves, or they can option out and have us clean it. That's why there's a two-hundred-dollar deposit. That deposit will keep them, and we'll pay to get it cleaned up for them. So those are our proposed rental rates at this time.
Even though we're raising our rates, are we not still the cheapest place to rent for a function?
By far. And we included in the packet of information a table of comparison. The table of comparison shows many of the rental facilities, private as well as government facilities in the area, and we're still very affordable as compared. And also, I think, as we renovate our community buildings and get those up to par, looking very nice, I think we're going to surpass the quality.
When was the last time you had the child look at the front?
Seven years ago.
Seven years ago?
Yes, sir. And we'll look at that closer.
Okay.
Keep tabs on that.
Any more questions, Mr. Steve? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Next, consider adopting downtown Odessa Master Plan for the city of Odessa. Ms. Gloria.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second and final reading for the adoption of the Downtown Odessa Master Plan. Downtown Odessa Board of Directors in the city of Odessa are in gateway planning out of Dallas to perform a study regarding redevelopment and catalytic development for downtown Odessa. The design and redevelopment plan is known as the master plan, and it is ready for implementation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any more question? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Seven.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Ms. Selena. Next, other council actions. Consider approval of donation of retired vehicle to West Odessa Volunteer. Who's filling?
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is for the donation of a retired crew cab truck to the West Odessa Volunteer Fire Department that has submitted a request earlier this month. This vehicle will serve in first response duties to their service area, but also support the city if needed. Staff recommends that we do declare this truck surplus property and donate it to the West Odessa Volunteer Fire Department. Our chief, Jimmy Ellis, is here. Do we have a moment?
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Same song and dance I give you every time. We need everything. We, without donations, there's no way we extend business. We're doing the best we can with what we've got.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you for everything, you have.
Thank you.
No more discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, do you want to go ahead and take a picture? Do you want to come up here? Huh?
Why would you want to read a picture?
We do that enough with Mike.
Once you're coming up, and then we'll stand right here and we'll take a picture real quick. You know, you got to have the PR stuff.
Oh, I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you.
Next, consider approval of donation of retired vehicles to the Gardendale Volunteer Fire Department.
Chairman, Mr. Mayor, this is a retired tank truck that we pulled out of service. Gardendale Volunteer Fire Department has requested that we donate this vehicle, as with the other vehicle who serve in their first response duties and assist the city as needed. It is a two thousand and two Freightliner with a three thousand gallon water tender body on it. We do recommend that this be declared surplus property and donated to the Gardendale Volunteer Fire Department.
Any more questions?
Chief is president of their department.
Do you want to say anything?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we, prayers have been answered. We need this to keep continuing what we do out there. Without your help here in the city, we couldn't do this. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We need this to keep going.
Oh, it's our pleasure.
Justin. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Any more discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Seven.
We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Do you all need?
And we thank you for what you do out there.
Thank you.
Would you all like to come up and get a picture?
Yeah. Like to say thank you.
It's our pleasure.
Yes, thank you all very, very much.
I'll be all right. Because we need this.
If you have any more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Seven.
We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Do you all need?
And we thank you for what you do out there.
Thank you.
Would you all like to come up and get a picture?
Yeah. Like to say thank you.
It's our pleasure.
Yes, thank you all very, very much.
I'll be all right. Because we need this.
Okay, Council, I can't see you now, so can you all just?
That's why I was sitting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, next, we'll go into public hearings. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of a request by CBS Pharmacy. Mr. Brenner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city mailed out three notices related to this request. We did not have any notices returned, and we did not receive a positive or negative response to this request. Property involved in this request is located in the northeast corner of intersection of Northwest Loop three thirty-eight and West University Boulevard. The site was recently annexed into the city, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve a preliminary plan for CBS First Edition in September of this year. The site has an existing commercial building on the property, and this will be removed prior to new development on this property. And land use in the general area does consist of retail development and vacant land. The applicant and the property owner is CBS Pharmacy, and the purpose of the request for original zoning and retail would facilitate retail development and related uses on this site. This area is considered one of the prime areas for commercial and retail development in Odessa. The proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the proposed design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and context-sensitive roadways. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this original zoning request of retail, and the planning staff does concur with the commission's recommendation, and we happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Brenner?
I do. Where will be the entrance for this? Will it be on West County, on West University, or will it be over?
It'll be the right of way. It'll be on the right of way that's to the east of this property. There won't be any entrance off of the service road or West County. It'll be addressed through the right of way that's just to the east of this property.
Okay.
A specific?
Yes, specific.
Okay. Any more questions? This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Seven.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of D.R. Horton. Mr. Brenner.
Yes, sir. The city sent out two notices related to this request, and we did not receive any notices returned, and we did not receive a positive or a negative response to this request. The property involved in the request is located east of Kate Creek Drive, is between Deer Creek Ranch Road and P Bar Ranch Road. The site is currently vacant. There are two drill sites in the area, and land use does consist of, in the area, does consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant in this case is D.R. Horton. They do own the property, and the purpose of the request would be to facilitate the development of two hundred and forty-two single-family residential lots. These lots range in size from fifty-seven hundred and fifty square feet up to ten thousand five hundred and eighty square feet. There is a one-acre community center and park site. There is approximately a one-half acre open space drainage facility, and there is also a creation of a four-point-nine acre surface drainage area. The proposed lot areas are adequate, and they would provide open space and separation with the main structures and accessory buildings that are on each individual property, and it would provide a separation and open area from adjacent properties. The area is considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed zoning is consistent with our comprehensive plan, and the development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, connected roadways within subdivisions. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and the staff does concur with the commission's recommendation. We happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I had a few questions about the drainage. Down here at the bottom, it looks like there's going to be an opening between the houses where it will drain from the residential area out into this drainage area. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, there's a, I keep going to plant like that real like the optics.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am, there is sort of a, the half-acre open site and drainage facility does serve as sort of the channeling device to go down to the four-point-nine acre surface drainage area. So it is addressed through, or handled through that.
I, I'm sure that you've taken care of this, but I have to ask this. The houses that are adjacent to this, is there any potential for flooding in those houses?
No, ma'am. The Public Works Department has addressed this along with Mr. Landgraf, the civil engineer that's been hired by D.R. Horton, and that is all been taken care of, where there would not be any potential.
So there's not going to be backup of water in the streets or anything? How, I guess I'm very ignorant about this, so kind of educate me how that's going to work.
I tell you what, John, I'll let you address that. He's, John's a little more well-versed at it than I am.
I guess what I'm worried about, John, is, you know, you've got this little exit area for the water, you've got the streets there, and we have some pretty heavy down cores. Is any chance that this is going to back up in the streets and put?
If there is, I'm going to be going in both those houses on either side. That might want to do that. No, ma'am, there, there's a large open area there between those, and it's not deep enough to make any locks. So we thought that was a good open space that we maintain by the homeowner association, just like the community center that they're also building. Very similar to the one that they built in phase one. This is phase three of the D.R. Horton's project. But there's a drainage easement off of that street through that common space. It'll be wide and shallow.
Okay.
And then go into a drainage ditch back on the backside of the drill site, and then goes into that detention basin. And that detention basin will hold the stormwater for a hundred years.
Well, I'm not worried about the detention basin. I'm just worried about that shallow area that the water's going to be going through.
Yeah. It, it'd be designed hydraulically to handle the storm.
That, that was my only worry. I wouldn't want to live on either side of it.
Can you show?
Well, we've got those all over town.
On this thing? Here. Can I come around this corner?
I'm just saying, our development process requires a new subdivision that the developer provide for adequate drainage and proper drainage.
Yes.
Where that is, Billy, I can't get that arrow to come up, but it's.
Kind of where the triangle is.
It's in this area, right here.
Yeah, right there.
Right there, it's right there. It's wide, it's over a half acre wide, and it's shallow where it's designed a sheet through there. And if it comes there, and you come down, it comes into this detention basin. That's not coming up very good.
Okay. Other questions? Where's Michael? There he is. Okay, are there any more questions? If not, I'll entertain them. Oh, let me open it up. This time, we'll open up the floor for any public comment on this item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Seven.
We have a second.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of St. Luke's Methodist Church. Mr. Brenner.
Yes, sir. The city sent out twenty-seven notices related to this case. No notices were returned. We did receive one written approval and one written protest. And the council did give first approval to this request on October the twenty-fifth of this year. The property involved in the specific use permit request is located northeast of the intersection of East Forty-second and Lindale. The site is zone single-family three. It is currently occupied by a vacant church building, and land use in the general area does consist of single-family residential development and related uses. The applicants in this case are St. Luke's Methodist Church. They do currently own the property, and April Carroll is the optionee on this site. They are requesting a specific use permit that would allow a nursery school in a single-family three zoning district. This particular church building has been vacant for approximately six to eight months, and the proposed reuse of the building as a nursery school is an appropriate use for this property. The site plan was submitted that does indicate the location of the twenty-thousand eight-hundred-ninety-two square foot church building. There are a hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces and two playground areas existing on this site. Ms. Carroll has indicated that the church offices will be turned into indoor rooms. The fellowship hall will be used for an after-school physical education program. The sanctuary will be used for graduation ceremonies, music classes, parading classes, ballet, and special presentations. The building setbacks and parking meet the current ordinance requirements, and approximately fourteen percent of this property is currently landscaped, and the applicant has stated that in the future she will provide highlight landscaping in the parking lot. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to the request with the following conditions. The hours of operation will be from six a.m. to nine p.m. The applicant will be required to acquire all the necessary permits from the Texas Department of Human Resources. All building codes will need to be met. Any work in the city right of way would require the appropriate permit, and this work will conform to the standards of the current right of way ordinance and policies. Any signs for the development will need to meet ordinance requirements. The permit would be reviewed upon receipt of any neighborhood complaints. This is considered a temporary permit, and the council would have the right to terminate the specific use permit for violation of many of the terms and conditions that's listed within the. within the specific use permit, or because of a negative effect on this property or surrounding properties. And this could be accomplished after appropriate notice and hearings. Also, we are requesting adoption of this site plan. And I believe at the first meeting, Councilman Ozales, you did question if, for some reason, say five or six years down the road, they decide not to have a daycare, it could revert back to being a church without any extra action requirement of the council. And we happy to answer any other questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Brenly? Okay, at this time, we will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to ordinances. Consider amending Article 4-6 of the City of Odessa Code of Ordinances entitled Peddlers and Intendant Vendors. Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you've stated, this does amend the ordinance for peddlers and intendant vendors by putting in specific measures for signage that would allow for easier prosecution of trespassing should they ignore the owner's wishes to leave the premises. It sets the hours of operation from 8:00 to 8:00 for peddlers and intendant vendors, and from 9:00 to 8:00 for mobile street vendors. It specifies the grounds for the denial, the revocation, or the suspension of a permit, and this is second final approval awaiting your action.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Law? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll consider amending Chapter 3 entitled Building Regulations. Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance would set by minimum standards by which property would need to be maintained. It addresses property that is commercial or is apartment. It will not apply to private residences that are owner-occupied. It establishes the size, different mechanical requirements, and the maintenance standards for these buildings. And whereas the building codes initially set the standards, this would allow us to come back in and see that those standards are maintained.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Law? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Law, thank you and your staff for all the hard comments.
Oh, thank you.
Next, we move to resolution. Consider approval of the leases of e-official enterprises. Mr. Law.
There was some discussion. These are the various leases that we have worked out with our very patient partners in this endeavor, and I believe there was some discussion about having this going to executive session. I can explain it now, or do you?
So do we need to make that motion? Go into executive session?
Want to go in? Yeah. To make the motion.
Yeah.
Do we have a second? Okay. Motion fails for a second. Mr. Law.
Okay. I will explain this, and we have basically a ground lease which covers the lease that we have with the property that the hotel is going to be on, and what used to be referred to as the plaza, we are going to incorporate those into one lease, and that will cover those areas. We are having that lease for a 30-year period with the option to extend it for an additional 30-year period at a dollar a year. We have the conference center lease, which is going to be a net lease arrangement, which will cover the building that is owned by the city, but will be leased to them so that they can incorporate it into their hotel, into their system for filling the hotel rooms and attracting people to our building. Then we're going to have the parking space lease agreement, where we are going to have property on which the city will build and maintain a parking garage of approximately 319 spaces. And we will lease approximately 165 spaces to the hotel in order for them to have room, adequate rooms for their guests. And we have, as I mentioned, we have very patiently together worked out the details of this. They have approved of the leases that we have set forth, and we believe they're ready for final approval.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Law?
Yeah. Can you explain why we've changed the lease concerning the plaza?
It was my.
I don't think all of the council knows about that.
It was my understanding that in their negotiations with Marriott, it was found that perhaps some additional space would be necessary to do some of the functions that Marriott was suggesting. That space is, of course, readily available being immediately next to it. We also have in there where, if in the future it looks like it is beneficial for the city to take over part of what the plaza currently had been, then we would be able to do so. I might also mention that we are retaining 30 feet to the east of the current Ector Theater in order to enlarge that to facilitate both the Ector Theater and what would be the plaza or their property that is going to be facing. So that would allow them to put on plays, presentations, musical, whatever they wish to do. And again, this has been at the negotiation of both parties, and we feel like this is the best one.
Any more questions?
I have a question. To the old start, are y'all happy with the, I don't know about working with Eric, but with the results?
They've been working with Joel, so it's a little bit better.
Oh.
Yes, and that just means more expense to us in building that out, and then putting more amenities out there for the public, but that's, we're willing to do that.
I just didn't want y'all to not know what was going on with the plaza.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, number nine. Consider a resolution of support for the Odessa Hispanic Chamber of Commerce in regards to the Mexican Initiative. Mr. Morton.
Mayor and Council, both the City and ODC, by your actions and your funding of the Mexican Initiative through the Odessa Hispanic Chamber have shown your support. However, this resolution is basically a formal resolution to say that you, that the City, by vote of the council, is very supportive of the efforts of the chamber, Hispanic Chamber, to chase down the Mexican Initiative through funding of the ODC.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Mayor? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a second?